Five, four, three, two, one, go.
All right, it is six o'clock on Wednesday, calling this meeting to order. And Diane, could you just give us a rundown of who you got on the world call?
We have Larry, yourself, Jack, Chief Elquidino, Pete, Charlie, Terry, Tina, Nancy. Did I miss anybody?
Trish, right? All right, so the lady of the hour, as always, Trish, if you could give us the rundown of what you learned this, um, in the last couple of days.
Sure, absolutely. And I did try to condense it. Clearly, there's a lot of talk going on as things are changing and everyone's talking about opening up. So I hope I condensed it enough but covered all the important things that we all need to know. So, one of the first things that was actually on yesterday's legal call is outdoor dining can begin on May eighteenth. Lawn or patio areas are acceptable. It said tents are allowed to be set up provided they, there are only roof coverings, no sides. Any tent that is in excess of four hundred feet requires an assembly permit from your local fire department. And occupancy would be based on our usual guidelines, not COVID guidelines. So whatever we have in town, they've got to follow. And a health agent said, can we close down a restaurant for not abiding by the governor's order for social distancing? He said restaurants are going to be placing their tables on sidewalks. Um, as long as there's forty inches for pedestrians, will the six feet social distancing space affect that? And the answer was, um, obviously contact Department of Health or the local police, there you go chiefs, for questions if you can actually close the restaurants. Statutory citations and fines could be a route to take. As far as the six feet, it may not be needed since people would be walking by and not standing still next to a table. Somebody else, a fire chief, said with the fire code and the six feet social distancing, can tents over four hundred feet be used? And the answer is they're actually going to be doing an inspection for company and patron's safety. But at the moment, the notice in the emergency order could change as what we've been learning right along, everything seems to be changing. He said that we need to make sure that there are standard safety items on the inspection. So the fire department may have to check, um, do a checklist like entryways and exit ways, um, if there is a tent. He said fire code is still, uh, has to apply above all else. Uh, any EMS person said, uh, should our private insurance company be on these calls? Because they also insure private campgrounds. And the answer was, we would not be able to give legal advice to private campgrounds. Um, we'll get back to you on this. And this campground thing never seems to be going away. Uh, the town of Hampton said, can restaurants set up tents and tables? And would site plan review be required? Like if they wanted to put tables on the sidewalk, would the publicly owned sidewalks need to be approved for use? And the answer was, they would need to comply within their site plan and the permissions that they have from the town. If it is a town right of way, it would have to be determined if the temporary activity would be allowed under the site plan. So, um, I mean, we don't have that many restaurants in town, I don't have to name them, but you can picture where they are and if outside dining was done, are they on the town's right of way? So that's an issue, not too many places in town, but there are a couple. Uh, a police chief also said, can we open our campgrounds? And what does that mean? That they are only allowed to be open to New Hampshire residents and members? What do we do for enforcement as the police department? And the answer is, um, they're forwarding the question to the governor's office and haven't heard back. But basically, a New Hampshire resident is defined as someone who owns property someplace in New Hampshire. Membership is not explicitly defined, but it seems like the campground would have to had established a membership prior to the COVID pandemic. So writing a letter could promote voluntary compliance, but otherwise, police can impose fines. A fire chief said, um, if I have a seasonal guest of a campground year after year, is that person considered a member? And the answer was, unless you have a guaranteed spot every year and a formal membership that was probably paid in advance of COVID, if you don't have that, you would not be considered a member. Somebody else asked for, how should we handle, um, requests for certifications, or certificates rather, of completion and occupancy? And they did really go into this pretty much in depth on emergency order twenty-three, it addresses this. And again, I've got that posted on the, um, EMD website, uh, under emergency orders. Another fire chief said, um, if an outdoor restaurant sells alcohol, do they need to be fenced in? And the answer is, there's actually going to be guidance this week on that. Uh, we've got another call on Friday, they're going to address this and a couple of other things that have come up since yesterday. Um, also, uh, Memorial Day was talked about. And it said, if Memorial Day services can be held, uh, if everyone stays in their car, and this was a question. And the answer was, in order to do this, the state would need a full proposal from whoever is going to host this Memorial Day event to address the specifics of that particular town's event. They said if cars are moving like parade, it's okay. But if they stop, that's going to look like a gathering of more than ten people. Then on today's call, so this was yesterday's legal, on today's call, they said, if you were having, say, a salute at the cemetery, people would have to stay in their car for that, with the exception of the PD, um, so that they could do their salute. Another question was, uh, town-owned beaches, um, are they allowed to open? You know, much of this has been talking about coastal. So this time, they zoned in on a town-owned beach. And they said, if it's a town beach, they are not allowed to open yet. Another question was, a local ordinance applying to restaurants and outside seating? And the answer was, the local ordinance, obviously, if there's a site plan approval and building permits and zoning ordinance, then obviously, that has to still be in the planning. You're not allowed to build something that doesn't apply to your local zoning. And they referenced emergency order number twenty-three and emergency order forty. And they said that if you want help, further help with this and on compliance, to go to RSA one fifty-five. And that talks about large tents. Um, there was, obviously, you know, the, um, emergency order forty-one was issued yesterday. And that's about Medicaid eligibility for insured, uh, along with incentive and stipends, uh, that are going to apply to corrections officers, EMS, police, fire, et cetera, from May fourth through June thirtieth. Um, they, they're, this is a moving target. Uh, they're going, what they're going to do is issue one check. Um, the police chiefs are both supplying Larry and I with a list of people. And depending on their category, uh, their job description, so to speak, and full-time or part-time, is going to dictate who's going to get what. The state said it's going to come in one check. So then unfortunately, poor Kim is going to have to break this down. But I'm going to call her tomorrow and go over what they want. Um, as far as cases go, we have, as of today, two thousand six hundred and thirty-six positive cases. That's up from forty-eight since we talked on Monday. Um, there's one thousand one hundred and five recovered cases, which is up from eighty-six when we talked on Monday. There are unfortunately ninety-two deaths, that's up eight since Monday. Two hundred and ninety-five hospitalizations. There's a hundred and fifteen current and twenty-five thousand ninety-seven negative. And only seventy-nine tests pending at the lab. As far as first responders go, we have twenty-two positives on first responders. Thirty-one first responders are totally quarantined. Seventeen of them are fire, uh, fourteen are police. And twenty-five are in quarantine housing. But there's no further needs at this time. And they're currently assisting all the municipalities and businesses, uh, according to the guidance of the two-point-oh stay-at-home guidance. Um, our JIC is still staff, staff, uh, Joint Information Command, um, sorry, is staffed and being monitored. And the focus right now is on reopening the economy. Social media support for first responders and conversation about protests regarding when the economy should reopen. And now there is new guidance, which is going to be expanded upon, on graduation ceremonies. They did comment that COVID deaths and cases continue to be in high volume. Um, and the data that you released, COVID activity in the state of New Hampshire is coming out. But understand that data is not always accurate. Sometimes, and I think this came out maybe on our last call, sometimes what's going across your TV screen is not the accurate number as what the police chief and fire chief are getting from E nine-one-one. And that's only because of how people come on and off the system. So just kind of know that it's a guidance, but don't, like Matt says, don't put your money on it. Um, there was also talk about the hazard pay and the eligibility. Um, and we've got a form that we, Larry and I have already started using. Um, it's, we've got eight weeks and two days that it's going to deal with. We're going to fill it out and submit it. And in a couple of weeks, they say we're going to get a check. So we're not waiting after the eight weeks to get the check. Um, they're talking about, uh, um, let me see. Oh, daily operations, again, they're, they're changing consistently, as I said. Wait a minute, I'm going to flip my page here. Okay. And they talked about churches. Um, and there is evidently some guidance coming out in churches. But they said, the emergency order forty extended the limitation of scheduled gatherings. Again, of no more than ten people. And it talked about it on emergency order number sixteen, which says that order goes till May thirty-first. And then paragraph nine of emergency order forty says that the stay-at-home order two-point-oh does not apply to churches provided they still comply with the limitation on scheduled gatherings of no more than ten people. Um, drive-in seating may also be used for church services. So there you go, I'm going to end with that.
All right. It's, um, a lot of, it, it, it's funny, the longer thing, the, longer this thing goes, the, the more interesting these problems that need solutions become.
Really, yeah.
I, I do want to touch upon something Trish touched upon. And like her, we don't need, need to name any places, but we have a very small amount of restaurants in town. So I'm wondering, uh, does it make any sense for somebody on this team to maybe do some socialization, some check-in with these places? I don't know what their intentions are, but I would hate to see one of them think that they're going to put all these tables, uh, in a section of their parking lot, which is actually a right of way. So, uh, what's everybody think?
I think that makes sense completely. Somebody should touch base.
Okay.
Hey, uh, Matt?
Larry?
I can, uh, I can speak to Todd because he owns that complex. And he can talk to the owner. Actually, the owner's part of EMS, so a couple of us know him.
Oh, true, yeah.
So we could take care of that one.
I don't know if, um, that'll also cover Chris's, I don't know about Osseo's, but, but, um, but Charlie, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I, I'm right next door. And I get to see the activity that's going on there. And I'll tell you, they're being real good.
Really?
They're doing takeout, yeah, they're doing takeout orders. Uh, I have heard a couple of voices over on the deck, but not many. Uh, no more than probably four to five cars have been in the parking lot at one time for the, for the bar. And, but the bar's got takeout orders. And, and Chris's, they've got a guy that's going out all the time delivering. I think there might be two delivery guys. And there are some people that come and pick up their food and leave.
Wow.
So it's, it's being real good over there.
Good. This is making me hungry, but, um, the, the, the good news is, um, they have this opportunity to take it to a next level next week. So, thank you Larry for, uh, kind of reaching out and seeing if they have any questions. I'm sure they've, hopefully, they've consulted their versions of, you know, the, these, um, conference calls, so. Um, so that's, that's that one. Uh, the other thing is, there are all these task forces going on now. And I think, not that it's, not that it's going to happen soon, but we've, some of us have already talked about this. We kind of need a town hall reopening task force.
That's a good idea.
And, uh, what I mean by that is, when we're ready, we want to make sure we have lines on the floor, plexiglass, you know,
For the windows.
Whatever we need. Um, so I'm wondering, um,
And a direction to, to Matt.
Yeah, exactly.
When they come in the side door, they go out the front.
Or really, something like that's almost like a feasibility study, does it work? So, um, I'm one, I'm wondering, uh, Diane and Nancy will kill me, but they kind of make sense to be part of this task force. Uh, who else? Can we get the health officer on this task, task force? Does that make sense?
Matt?
Nancy?
I don't know if Bob will want to come in to the building or anything because his wife had, um, a kidney transplant. So he's being very cautious with her. But, I mean, on the phone, he'd be more than happy to help.
Exactly. And I think what I'm trying to say is, um, very limited, uh, you know, in-person involvement in this task force. In other words, if you're in there already and you can take a measurement or whatever, that's fine. But we wouldn't want to see like eight people having to get together, uh, to do this. Maybe until the very end.
Yeah, they could do a punch list non-locally.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
And then implement it when it's safe to do so. And then obviously, to consult with Trish or Trish or Larry.
And it's, it's one of those things, you know, uh, we do it now while we have some time, so we're not struggling. Uh, a lot of the poor supermarkets had to do stuff like, while they, you know, as I like to say, changing the engines on the airplane while in flight is not the way you want to do things. So,
So Matty?
Larry?
Matt, we were actually in at this morning, me, um, Little Elquidino, Nancy was there and Cheryl. Um, yeah, we were six feet apart. So, we, we need to do this, you know, maybe starting next week. So we need to come up with, um, a budget and a worker to install the plexiglass on Diane's window, Mary Jo's window, Cheryl's window. And they want a curtain blocking the kitchen. Um, and then obviously taping the floor or put feet on the floor, something like that.
Yep.
But we should probably start that next week, even if it's, opening's another three or four weeks away, at least it's in place. And the other thing, when we do open, we need to think about is if we're going to put something down there with the four-question questionnaire and a, um, thermometer to check incoming residents. They have a fever, obviously, they can't come in.
Right.
The, uh, the first one, I would like to start right away. Um, and I think Nancy was going to ask Tony if he can do it. But if the board wants to hire a contractor to do it, um, it doesn't matter, as long as it gets done. And then probably another couple of weeks, we'd have to come up with somebody to monitor the residents as they're coming in with, with the temperature and the questionnaire.
Yeah.
I think this sounds great. Can you, anyone hear me? I think we really need to keep an eye on the numbers that Trish has been talking about. And I am not in favor of any major reopening until they are a little bit better. But I'm totally fine with getting prepared for when that happens. I don't think there's any rush to allow a lot of people in there. And I don't think the girls want that either.
Mr. Chairman?
Chief?
If, if the board wishes, if Tony cannot do it, uh, we, the fire department usually uses, uh, Jim Ryan, who has his own contracting company and who is bonded. I could ask Jim, if the board wants to, to, uh, measure the two windows that would need the plexiglass and see if he could, uh, turn in a price. So the board has an idea on what it would cost the plexiglass Diane's section and the, uh, Clark's section.
I, I think that's a, a, an exercise that, that's worth doing, no matter who does it. I will say this, just in general terms, and I, again, I'm not looking to solve all of these problems tonight on this call. But we really need to take advantage of the time we have and make a plan before we start doing things. Because I'd hate to see us, you know, in enthusiastically doing something that we have to undo. Um, and, and I'll throw this out there, and this is going to be a grenade that could cause a bunch of conversation, uh, right now. But, um, we really need to think about who needs to be in that town hall to service customers? And who can be either at home or in another building while we're open? So I'll just let that sit. We don't need to talk about it right now. But I think, uh, I think that's what most businesses, most offices are doing. In other words, if you're going to social distance a line, it makes no sense for somebody to have to, uh, you know, come out of an office and bump into somebody who's in line. Let's, let's face it, we have a very small area to work with. So that's why I say we need a, a team, a task force to go off and kind of
Yeah.
start drawing some of this stuff up.
Matt?
Nancy?
Matt? I would just like to say, I did talk to Tony. He said he would be willing to do something with the plexi, but he would still have to have somebody cut it and everything. So I like the Jim Ryan idea. And Tony said he would be more than happy to come in each day and clean all the surfaces and whatever from the people being in the, in the hall. We, we talked about removing chairs outside Mary Jo's window, so you don't have people coming in, sitting down and, you know, whatever. And the other thing we talked about, us girls, was that maybe we get a small printer copier for Mary Jo's office, so they don't have to go to the copier in the kitchen and they don't have to pass those people that are standing there. So we can discuss this, you know.
Yeah, exactly. This is, this is all good stuff to discuss in another meeting.
Yeah.
So, um, because I would even say, and here's me throwing another discussion grenade, I'll call it. Um, but why, let's, let's think out of the box, because we could move that window. That's all I'm saying, you could extend a window. But again, I'm just thinking out loud. So if, if, uh, so we got Diane, Nancy, they're talking to Larry. Um, Chief Elquidino will probably give some input, I'm sure, on, in terms of things. But anybody else want to be on that?
I would recommend, this is Diane.
Yeah.
Um, to be honest, I'm home, so I'm not going to be much help there. I would recommend the people that are in there, like Cheryl and, um, Mary Jo and Kim.
Yeah.
Especially Cheryl and Mary Jo. They know how the traffic pattern should work for them.
Yeah, definitely.
Right.
I think, I think Diane, we're going to rely on you for some, uh, some calling, some vendors are taking some orders. I think that's probably where you would come in.
Oh, the grunt work.
The grunt work. The stuff none of us are smart enough to do.
Hey, Matt, this is Tina.
Tina?
Hi, can I just add on to you? I know we're not discussing it tonight, but can I add on to the list for, um, you know, what, how we're going to go forward? Um, just the, the pantry and, um, and the welfare, but, uh, I,
That's a good idea.
Yeah, definitely.
All right, thank you.
It's, we need to, that's part of the, the thing I think the committee needs to think about is all of the sort of processes and offices involved in reopening, you know. I think, I think probably the burning issue one is going to be servicing customers with their, you know, registrations, tax bills and stuff. But definitely, how does, how does everything else work too? Um, one thing, here's another discussion grenade, I don't know why I'm doing this to myself, but I'll throw it out there. Uh, this is, this is way in the future. But if people are looking at the calendar and if people are following the news like I am, we will more than likely have to hold an election, two of them, one in September, one in November. And for, for me, I don't, uh, a few months ago, in one of these meetings, you might have heard me say, when, when everybody came forward and said they're not in favor of moving the election out of the town hall, I said, more than likely, we won't do that until we need to. We might find we need to in twenty-twenty to,
Yeah.
to get the appropriate level of social distancing. But that's, September eleventh will be the first one we have to host. And I'm sure Mary Jo will be on a ton of calls with her folks as to how that's going, any guidelines they're going to give, so. But that's something to think about as well. So, so Chief Elquidino, all I'll say is, uh,
Good luck.
Keep an eye on, on that fire department, because we might be there sooner than we thought we were. But again, that's just me.
It could be mail-in still.
Outside of us.
The fire station's closed to outsiders.
Yeah, um, so, to Kate's point, the, the, the mail-in, um, the mail-in part is, only seems to make sense to me. But, but the, uh, you know, they're going to, they're going to, people above our pay grade, well, except for Charlie's, Charlie's hundred dollars a year pay grade.
Yeah.
He's, they're going to decide for us, so we'll just have to implement, so.
Yep.
Um, all right, this is very controversial so far. Anything else for tonight?
Matt, I was going to say, with reopening and I'm sure Terry's concerned, we probably have to help her, or maybe the trustees are going to work on how to, if there is a way to do anything for them, whether it's just where the person sits. Should they have plexiglass or plastic? Or is it also possible to do that at the library? I don't know, I'm just tossing it out, it's another grenade.
So I would, I would say that, that is true. I didn't even think of that. But I think, uh, Terry, if you want to pass it on to the trustees, they ought to start thinking about a list of what they might want to do and we'll help where we can.
Yes, thank you, um, yes, this is Terry. Could I add to the comment?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Um, we did, we've had a brief discussion. Um, we have a meeting scheduled for next week and that will be one of the agenda items upon reopening. But, um, an idea had come regarding Mr. Lightizer from Newton Door and Garage, because he, um, that's his business doing doors. And he is going to, um, wait to see what measurements we might need for the plexiglass. So we don't have a cost, nothing's been done. And I know keeping minimal people to the library. So I was planning to do some measurements if he tells me what. I did look at Market Basket and that was kind of what I was thinking, um, something like that. Um, uh, and there's various calls with the library's task force as well. So I'm trying to keep aware of all of those, um, recommendations. But also having, um, a little spot on the bottom where people could slide, um, I don't know, I don't know. It's, we're trying to limit money as well. Um, it, these aren't official because they haven't been discussed with the board as a meeting. But just kind of, you know, like you said, following the news and trying to, um, But just kind of, you know, like you said, following the news and trying to, um, come up with best practices.
So I hate to say, I hate to say money is no object, 'cause it's always an object. But what was shared with us this week, uh, Charlie had it as our state rep. There is a, and I'm forgetting the names of all of these funds, but there is a fund and one of the, uh, things that is covered under the state funding is just what we're talking about, is improvements, changes needing to be made to buildings to reopen, so.
Right. Yeah.
Yeah. So if, uh, if, whatever we do, just, if it's the right thing to do, we just try to, um, find some money and, uh, keep our receipts and keep everything, uh, squared away and then perhaps, uh, we can do it.
Okay. Um, I have one more, um, observation in our situation regarding in and out of the building. If once we, I think initially we might do curbside. I mean, there again, these are just kind of, um, possibilities. But, um, if somebody did need to come in one doorway and out the other, um, somebody may have trouble where we're not ADA compliant on the front step. So that would prohibit some of the population. So, um, that's all these things we're under consideration for.
Can I comment on that?
Sure.
So that came up, so that everyone knows, on one of these calls, when they said as people were talking about reopening their businesses, um, if you had one door, and even our town hall, you figure one door has stairs, the other one does not. They said if by any chance somebody does come in that say can't do the stairs, then whoever is gonna, unfortunately, we're gonna have to have somebody standing there taking people's temperatures, which you probably will have to do that as well. But who's ever standing there honoring the people coming in will have to say, they have to move aside to allow the person that can't use the stairs to go out the door that's inaccessible. So that has been discussed.
Okay, well that makes sense. Mm-hmm. Thank you, Tricia.
You're welcome.
Alright, so, so really at this point, we're, should be coming up with lists and, um, you know, ideas for how we can get this done and then, um, move out as best we can. But, um, like I said, plans are a good thing, just so we don't have to undo something if it doesn't quite work out. Because, as I said, I don't, I don't see us reopening tomorrow or anything. I think we have a few weeks here, at least, so. But it's up to us, you know.
Yeah, quick question. Um, when we do a locked opening, are you looking or thinking about maybe doing four hours a day? Not eight hours a day, like seven, eight to four, but maybe twelve to four?
I think that's, um, kind of far ahead of us. But I, I tell you, just me, the way I've been thinking is reduced hours. I, I think that's probably the way to go. But we have a lot of time before that.
Yep.
This is Diane.
Alright, Diane?
Just a quick comment on reduced hours. That means more people coming in on a, in a concentrated timeframe.
Yeah, that's the only thing to worry about. What we could do is, um, and I'm just think, again, we don't have to solve anything tonight. But, uh, that was just something I was thinking about. Um, and, you know, there's a, there's a, probably a plus and a minus to every, uh, idea we could come up with. But, um, there are silly things we, we could do, you know, we could tell people last name, you know, A through L. You have to come in on this day. Or if you're, um, why, why do I do this? We don't need to talk about this tonight. But we could, we could basically, if your birthday is not, you know, if, if your registration is not due for three months, can you not come in? Like, we could do stuff like that, so.
Well, I think we need to encourage them to still do everything online and try and keep people from coming in. So, that's the main thing.
Yes, err on the spot of caution.
Yeah.
Right.
Alright, anything else for tonight? COVID nineteen related? Go ahead, Terry.
Hi, yes, thank you. Um, I have a question regarding the thermometers. Um, I have been looking at some online, but I'm, I'm not sure which ones would you say would be the best ones? Are there any FDA, um, any, what would you recommend?
Well, the no-touch ones.
Yes, definitely.
So that's a, that's a, that's a Larry, Trish, Chief El Cidino question?
Yep.
Might, might have.
Go ahead. Help, we know what to get.
That, that, that's what I was gonna say too. Trish has the list.
Oh, okay.
Great.
Wonderful, wonderful. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alright, anything else? If, um, if you guys were listening, uh, just 'cause it came in on Tricia's list last night, uh, we are, in regards to Memorial Day, the board has voted to, and I won't use the word cancel, we're gonna replace it with a, basically a socially distant approach. So more to come on that later. We're still putting pieces together. But the goal of the board is still to honor our fallen, but at the same time, not putting people in a position where they, they'll be congregating and potentially sharing the virus or anything like that. So we'll, we'll recognize the day, but it'll be a lot different than we're used to.
Okay, good.
More to come on that, though.
Okay, that's what, that's the favorite thing that the state says. This may change tomorrow, we'll let you know.
Yeah, I've, I've heard the governor, Jack was talking about the governor answering questions on Channel Nine, which he does periodically. I usually watch. And, um, I, you know, the guy says, "I'm not sure about that," better than anybody I've heard in my life.
I know.
Um, he's, 'cause he's, he's got a lot of, you know, the questions are unbelievable. The questions are like way out of left field, like sometimes like, like I can't even believe this is a problem for somebody. But you live and you learn, so.
Yep, you know.
Chair, this is Jack. I, Matt, I have a question. Uh, this, this relates to the police department and the fire department. Are they checking and taking temperatures of employees coming in?
Yep.
Uh, I'll let the chiefs answer that.
I, I could speak for the fire department. You can only go in one door and exit one door through the apparatus bay. As soon as you walk in, there's a table with sanitizer, a touchless thermometer and a logbook. You log in who you are, you log in your temperature, and then I believe there's eight or nine questions that you have to yes or no on the questions, and then you can enter the building. Yes on any other questions, or I believe it's one, uh, one hundred point four, you're asked to leave the building. And you do the exact same thing on your way out.
And how about the police department? Are they doing the same thing? Does anyone know?
I don't know if the chief's on. I know he.
Yeah, I'm on. We're not quite in the technical department, but we're similar.
Yes.
But you are, you are checking their temperatures when they come in. Well, I was just thinking that, is that something we need to do at the transfer station?
Um, how, how difficult, Trish, would it be to get a thermometer and teach those guys how to do it?
That's a funny one.
So we probably can. I'll let Larry in.
That's a good idea. Yeah, let's see if they're not wearing masks.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chair? Just so you know, it took us almost five weeks to get a thermometer.
Right.
To get that touchless thermometer. That's the problem. I just threw the EOC. I ordered one on April twenty ninth that was supposed to be delivered within two days. I received an email, it's back, it's backdated, uh, I'm sorry, backordered. I might see it towards the end of this month. So, if, maybe Larry has better luck in getting, we need two more thermometers for us. So, just, just putting it out there that it's, Larry has better luck getting thermometers than the fire department does.
Pete, Pete, why, why do you need so many thermometers? I thought this was a portable unit that you, uh, is it just because there are that many employees or, or why?
It, it, we're, we're replacing the ones that are on the ambulance and the one that's on the rescue truck. It's those, uh, the old style that you actually put in somebody's ear. So we're trying to limit, uh, contact as much as possible.
Yep, very, very good. Thank you, yep.
But we'll work.
So I guess my, I guess my, I guess my question is, can we get one for the transfer station? And I'm assuming when the town hall opens, there'll have to be one for the town hall to checking people as they come in and even the library.
We, Larry.
Alright.
Hey, this is Pete. Can I say something here?
Yes.
Um, we, we would need one, Jack, everybody, listen, we would need one for every building in order to follow that protocol that the fire department has. Um, and that's, uh, uh, four or five buildings, that's, that's an awful lot. I, I, I'd say everything like that goes to the first responders first and then possibly think about the transfer station.
Yeah, I think, uh, I don't think we're talking per building.
I don't know if I'd need more than one. We, we just have everybody, when they commit, report into one building, Pete, and we check them from there. If they, let's say that we use the cardboard building, the recycling. That's where everybody reports in the morning for their temperature, and it's over, whatever, uh, the chief said a hundred and four, you go home. You know, be very simple. They don't go after all their buildings till they get checked out.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Go ahead, Chief.
Alright, not, not, not to prolong this, the fire department is following the guidance of the fire service. They're the ones that set the parameters on the temperature, what, you know, your questionnaires, et cetera. I'm not sure on anything else. So we're following the guidance that we were given.
Matt, I, Matt, I work on this with, with those departments. I'll take care of it.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Larry.
Thanks, Larry.
Um, on, on the, um, on a similar subject, before we hang up here, um, would the board be interested in buying lunch for the transfer station this weekend?
Yes.
Yep.
Aye, aye.
So Kate's and I, um, can we, Nancy, can you do the thing with Pete again and work with Pete on the best day?
Yep, he can do that, yep.
Good. They burn dessert too.
I'm sorry?
Kidding, never mind.
Well, we have.
I, I think Trish wanted an invite.
Yeah, she can s- bring your trash down, have some pizza. The only thing is, I wanna make a motion that everybody, everybody's gonna wear a mask while they eat their free lunch. That's the only thing.
And videotape that, please.
That, that's comical.
Yeah, I try. But let's, uh, you know, and again, 'cause I heard what Trish said, we're, we're buying, um, this, this is for the transfer station this weekend, but the board is, is keeping an eye on everybody to, uh, reward everybody as appropriate. Uh, you know, we'll, we'll be doing something for other departments too. But this is, transfer stations a little easier to do something like this, 'cause they're all together, so. Is there any motion to adjourn, hopefully?
No move.
No move.
Alright.
Wait, before you guys hang up, before you hang up, could I just, could I just ask if this selectmen and Nancy stay on the line? And everybody else, please disconnect?
Uh, well, what would that be for, Diane? 'Cause that would be a non-public.
That's not legal.
Right, I just need to ask a quick question about what you got in the mail today, if you wanted a meeting or not.
Oh, that. I think we have to do that elsewhere.
Yeah, I just wanna know if you want me to set something up, that's all.
Okay, so can somebody make a motion to go into non-public, please? Do we have a?
No move.
What is it, ninety-one A, three?
D, D is in, um, D's consideration of selling property.
Okay, so that's, uh, that, Larry, you can't second your own motion, so, um.
Second, so Kate.
So Kate's seconding, all in favor, Charlie?
Aye.
Matt's and I, Kate's?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
I don't think we have Lisa, do we?
No.
No.
Okay, so Pete, you wanna hang up, please?